Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members and city officials and also our home audience. I'd like to welcome you to our June 13th City Council Meeting. Tonight we have nine items on our agenda. At this time, Mr. Schofield, if you would, please continue with your roll call of members.
Carte?
Here.
Clay?
Here.
Corbin?
Here.
Rima?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Neil?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
And if you all would please stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, before we get into the need of meeting, so to speak, I'd like for us all to take a few moments of silence. I've actually had several council members and the mayor brought up to me. I'd like for us to take a few seconds just for respect of the people in the Orlando shooting, remembrance, and also the best wishes for the people that are still recovering from that episode. I think it's time to give a piece of silence. I hope everything works out for the best in that situation. At this time, the minutes of the previous meeting have been distributed for review. Hopefully, we've all had a chance to see them and accept them. Do we have the motion to accept the minutes? Ms. Corbin? Second in line, Mr. Florina. Roll call on accepting the minutes of the meeting.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
And we have accepted the last meeting's minutes. At this time, we have reports of committees. If I have a report, yes, Miss Patrick.
Thank you, President Arnold. Utilities Transit Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It's item number two. It's the first reading to appropriate $11,741 for transit to purchase accessories for the three new buses. ODOT has given the city these three buses at no cost to us. Last year, we had to pay a 20 percent match. The purchase of these accessories will make the three buses the same as our existing ones, and that's the reason behind it. This money is coming from the auction that we held of the outdated transit vehicles and equipment, so middle general fund money is involved, and this legislation will go all three reads. And at this time, if I may, I'd like to announce that there will be a scrap tire collection this Saturday out at Ross County Fairgrounds in the parking lot, and your first four tires are free. It's a passenger tire. So this is a chance to help keep the scooter population down, returning to the tire. Patrick, that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Anyone else? Mrs. Gray?
Thank you, President Arnold. The Human Resources Committee has three items on the agenda. Item number five, which is the first reading on ordinance to appropriate $30,000 to contract for building inspections, plan inspections, and other necessary services, and at the appropriate time, since there is a time, because it is time limited, we need to have this passed by June 30th. I will ask to waive the three read rule at the appropriate time. Item number six, which is the first reading on ordinance to correct sections of the ordinance 2-16 for rates of pay and other economic benefits for classified, nonclassified, and management level employees, and because we are in our sixth month of business, I will also ask to waive the three read rule. And item number seven, which is the first reading on ordinance to approve tentative agreement between the city and firefighters into executing agreement, and because it also is time limited, I will ask to waive the three read rule. The Human Resources Committee has also met to discuss item, I'm sorry, legislation request 16-058, which is request for ordinance to amend section 116.02D, which is to reflect one full-time, 40-hour position of law director clerk, one part-time, 20 hours with no benefits except required by law, law director clerk instead of two part-time clerks. And that was discussed and recommended for approval by council, but it is currently with the law director's office. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Clay?
Thank you, President Arnold. City Services does not have any items on the agenda tonight. However, we do have assignment number 16-051. We did have a committee meeting on that on 5/23. We sense the term that the council needs to take no action on this. This is a request for legislation to appropriate $2,160 for a care ceiling of the municipal court parking lot. They do have a fund that they can use for maintenance, and through discussions with the auditor and the court courts, they had a property amendment below call, so they have money for this. They don't need us to appropriate any new funds. So at this time, I'm going to have that taken out of committee.
You want to make a motion then to take that out of committee?
Do we need to make a motion?
Well, you just take it now.
Yeah, just take it out.
All right. Anything else?
I conclude my report.
All right. Yes, Mr. Corbin?
Thank you, President Arnold. Safety Services has one item on the agenda. It's the first reading to appropriate $3,100 for purchase of computers for the three new buses. This is necessary for ongoing investigations and a future investigation. It's also within the appropriate money. It will be reimbursed. It's time sensitive that they do purchase by the 30th. They have a government agency that will be able to reimburse that. Because of the time sensitive nature, I will ask to waive the three read rule.
Thank you, Mrs. Florina. Anyone else on the committee? Yes, Mrs. Neil?
Finance Committee has two items. Number eight is assignment 16067. It's to authorize contract for ORDC to file application with the state to participate in the 2016 CDVG program. There is a June 17th deadline for that submission, so I will ask to waive the three read rule. Item number nine is assignment 16068, and I'm going to make a motion to remove that from the agenda, and the mayor will explain more about that during his comments.
Are we removing it from the reading?
Yes.
Will that come back?
I apologize. It's actually eight and nine.
Eight and nine?
I apologize. Yeah, this is essentially related to the engineering committee meeting that we had before the meeting. Tonight, we're going to further, but actually, eight and nine do not need to be passed tonight or this year.
Okay, so I'll ask to remove that from the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Arnold. Is that all?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. That's fine. Anybody else? Reports of committees? Yes, Mr. Tavon?
Thank you, President Arnold. Number one item tonight, the second reading for appropriate $11,750 for purchase of traffic control monitor testing unit. This, we had one night, and at the proper time on the request, we waived the three read rule on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Tavon. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Carte?
Thank you, President Arnold. The land bank committee doesn't have any items on tonight's agenda, but I just wanted to let the council know that I have submitted legislation requesting the mayor to authorize the memorandum of understanding with the county commissioners. I went back and forth on this as to whether or not this legislation was necessary, but since council will eventually have to appropriate some money, I thought it appropriate to put the MOU before council to consider. Because application deadlines are fast approaching and because the issue needs to be passed in order to establish the land bank with the county, I will ask that the legislation be passed at the next regular session of council.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Anyone else? Yes. Sitting now, we will move into reports of officials. Mayor, Mr. Feeny?
Thank you, President Arnold. Just touch on tonight's agenda items briefly. The request that we put in for waiver, the various waiver three read rule, I support all those requests. I will vote for it item by item. Also support the appropriations within those requests. I'll touch base on the items that Councilwoman Neil brought up, and I apologize for not notifying you sooner. Item number eight is directly related to the engineering committee meeting that happened previous to this meeting and potential sidewalk for it. When this request was put in, it was in anticipation of making the CBVG grant application this year. That would have been the competitive grant, $300,000 that I mentioned, and the $75,000 for this year. Because we're able to combine the $75,000 allocation in 2016 with 2017, we don't have to do any of this application process until next year. That's why we don't have to pass it tonight. So the application for 2016 is being brought forward in 2017. Those two monies are going to be combined. This ordinance will be passed next year to authorize the agreement with ORDC. The next one, item number nine, is actually not ORDC, it's doing our grant administration, but it is with Ohio, OVRC, and is a part of the economic development strategy. And I don't believe this needs to be passed tonight, but it doesn't tie directly to number eight, so I don't know if that's going to be removed already technically, but it's not one that has a deadline for tonight. I will further find out when the appropriate deadline comes out, unless you know that it needs to be timed. All right, so that clears my. Eight is not necessary this year. I'll report back to council on that one. Beyond tonight's agenda, happy to announce a couple things. We're into week two of large item pickup. This is the week that if your trash is picked up on Tuesday, you should have set out your items last night. Set them out for the cruise if you haven't already, and continue for the next four weeks to do remaining large item pickup. Also happy to announce that we will be resuming our city's 4th of July pool party. It'll be at the city pool on the night of 4th of July. That's also the night of our fireworks. Fundraising letters have gone out. Entry for just the regular ticket price is $25 for the night. There's also a range of sponsorship options. The second, the top level being $1,000 or more, if anybody wants to donate more. But the second, we put out sponsorship package levels. We only have five of the top level, which is $1,000, and that's tied into the amount of promotion they get on WBEX, and then KKJ. Classic Brands just jumped on it, so there's actually only four of the top level sponsorship packages available, and they come with tickets and promotional opportunities. So thank you, Classic Brands, for being so quick to jump on and support city fireworks. You get hot dogs, and pop, and chip, and that kind of thing, swimming, and the best you have fireworks available. I know Safety Service Direct and I are going to be there that night. We encourage all council to attend. Anybody else in town wants to come down. Contributions, tickets, any night can be purchased at the mayor's office. We appreciate your support. Other than those two items, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Mayor Feeny. Now our caller, the second one.
So I would like to record all the following agenda items. Agenda item number one, to appropriate $11,750 for appropriate traffic control monitoring testing units. These units were put out of the budget in 2016. However, they are needed to meet requirements, clients' requirements, so therefore, I do support this appropriation. Agenda item number two, to appropriate $11,141 to purchase accessories for three new buses. This revenue has come from the sale of some transit vehicles, so therefore, I support this appropriation as well. Agenda item number three, is to appropriate $3,100 for the purchase of two computers. This purchase will be reimbursed to the city by the United States Secret Service, so the purchase must be made by June 30th, so I support this appropriation as well. Agenda item number four, to appropriate $7,093 to increase safety capital level funding. This is money received from an insurance settlement for the total, a total lease cruiser, so that money is coming from outside sources as well. I also support agenda item number five, to appropriate $30,000. This is to contract for a building inspection. This is to fulfill their job responsibilities for somebody that's retired in the engineering department. Retirement involves a budget for as well as a year of wages, so therefore, portion of this $30,000 has already been considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Corbin. The law director is running late, from what I understand. Right now, I would like to say that I had talked to Mr. Paulson, and this is my, he is doing better. He's had four sessions of cardiac rehab, so he says that going well, and he has improvement. So thanks for Mr. Paulson getting over. I also wanted to mention that several of the people who are here tonight, Mayor Feeny, auditor Miss Fettnagle, Mrs. Gray, myself, and Josh Carte, Mr. Carte all participated in, family feud, I really liked this last weekend, and we had a good time. We did pretty good for ourselves too, so I just wanted to say that we had a good group here. We also have a liquor permit that we need to approve for binder's coffee. A motion for that? Well, this was received, I think you brought this up at last meeting? That was, that was, okay, that was in the back of this room. Okay, so I'll let you then take care of moving that. And also, they've passed out some assignments that were made earlier this year for everybody to review. They had some discussions with the people over there, just kind of worked them over, so we'll clean up what we've done so far. Actually, we've done very well towards the legislation this year, so that's one I want to know, and I'm very proud of all of you. We've all done well. At this time...
Excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Corbin?
That was the item that I did miss, that we all didn't mention, which is item four, in lieu of the insurance money.
Yes.
Appropriate time, I will be asking.
Okay, sure. At this time, we have audience participation. We have a sign-in sheet for anybody wanting to address council. As your name is called, please step up to the microphone. Council Rule 21 does limit speaker to a five-minute presentation, total of 15 minutes on any one given subject. I will silently indicate, waving a finger at you, program, that you have one minute remaining and should have enough time to be able to summarize your presentation. Anyone that wishes to speak or add anything can stand up to the microphone and be more than welcome to say anything. If you do need to give your name and your address, anybody that's on the sign-in sheet, we already have your address, you don't have to. So if anybody would like to speak, I do have Mr. Corbin.
Yeah, I'm here to ask a question, and anybody in this room can answer it. Why is there a board job down at St. Charles Park for the children? It's kind of hard to take your child there, he's got to run to the river and relieve himself. Anybody want to answer why there's not one there? And I guess tomorrow morning, there'll be one, huh? If not, everybody watching this program, call every council member and mayor and ask them why there's not a board job there. This restroom's been closed for over three years. We got new park equipment down there four years ago for the kids to be used in. I think it's donated by Vashifly, and then vandals tore up the restroom and they closed it. Well, they made a mistake here, too. They closed them, but they didn't take some tuba fours of plywood and close it so they could go in and relieve themselves. I could smell the restroom when the wind is blowing out of the south on the floodwater. And I guarantee you, that's a little ways away. It stinks, you got a shelter house, two picnic tables there, but who wants to go there when it stinks? You need to clean them out and then board them up so they can't get in there. There's probably dirty needles in there, too. It's facing it high, and I can't believe they didn't board it up when they closed it down. Next thing I want to know, did our building inspector ever inspect a brick building on Mulberry and Main? Is it safe for our firefighters to go in that building? It's fallen down. No answers there either.
Mr. Corbin, I can answer you. I think council's never going to know the answer to those questions. The administration would be the one to answer the question. So I guess, you call me sometimes, and I answer when you call. That's probably a more effective and efficient way than asking council. So you can ask me directly, but I doubt that they'll know the answer.
Okay, I'll ask you directly.
And I don't know the answer, but I'll know the answer tomorrow.
I'll leave.
The building was, I will say, was...
I'm not going to get my answer.
...five or so.
...inspector, that building on Mulberry, Mulberry Main, State Flower Market, E.I. Crane, and that is the end.
Do we have anybody else in line that would like to speak to you?
I may have more answers.
Not seeing anybody, we'll move on. Does anybody have, does anybody have old business they'd like to bring up? Yes, Mrs. Gray?
I'd like to excuse Mr. Paulson, please.
I have a request, a motion to excuse Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion, please.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And we'll excuse Mr. Paulson from the meeting this evening. Any other old business? Yes, Mrs. Patrick?
Otherwise, we received copies of the liquor permits for both the forehouse and Machine Recall Incorporated on Second Street, and the H Team are on West Renegade. And as far as I know, there's been no objections, and I would like to make a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the second request from what last meeting, seconded by Mr. Carte. Roll call on the motion to accept those liquor permits.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And we have accepted those liquor permits. Any other old business? Not seeing any. We move on to a report from our clerk. Mr. Schofield?
Liquor permit, asking about objections to the designers, the company, and coffee shop LLC. They have 85 more things that would be responsible for their life. Again, they have two people that are interested in protecting themselves, looking at legal law.
Okay. We need to approach council. Is that so? Okay. Do you need to inform them to be at next meeting? Anything else? Okay. With that, new business, anybody have anything to mention?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to let everyone know that the pool commission met this afternoon, and we've had a very successful opening and ongoing operation, and the weather has cooperated, so we are happy with the numbers. I would also like to thank McDonald's for once again having a community day at the pool. I think they had over 600 people in attendance, and everybody had a great time, so I would like to thank them for, as always, continuing to support our community in a safe, healthy way. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. President?
Thank you, President Arnold. I would just like to report that there will be a community prayer vigil on Thursday at 8:30 PM in Yom Tange Park to honor the memories of the victims from the Orlando shooting over the weekend. I urge anyone who can to go down to the park to pay their respects and to fellowship with others who are grieving during this time.
What was the date?
This Thursday at 8:30 PM in Yom Tange Park. That's all I have, President Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Carte. Any other new business, anybody would like to bring up? Not seeing any. We'll move into committee assignments and meeting dates. Mr. Carte just mentioned the prayer vigil. I have been notified that we will have a budget hearing on our next meeting, but one after that on July the 11th, a board meeting at 7:30, and the auditor will be going over, giving some update, going over our budget, and giving a hearing we do in order to fulfill some state requirements. Anybody else have any meetings that they would like to mention or bring up? Not seeing any, we'll move into our legislation. And we had nine items, we have seven. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Schofield, start with number one.
An ordinance appropriating $11,750 for purchase of traffic control monitors along to testing units in current emergency.
Second reading. Mr. Tavon?
At this time, I'd like to request to waive the three read rule.
Request to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mr. Carte. Roll call on the request to waive the three read rule.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And we waive the three read rule now, leading on the ordinance basis.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And that ordinance has been passed. Item number two.
An ordinance appropriating $11,141 for purchase and sale of accessories for three new buses in current emergency.
Item number three.
An ordinance appropriating $3,100 being used by the Forest Department for purchase of two computers in current emergency.
Item number four. Mr. Florina?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule.
Have the motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mr. Paul. Roll call on the motion to waive the three read rule.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And that ordinance has been passed. And when you're ready, item number four.
An ordinance accepting and appropriating an insurance payment for a police cruiser in the amount of $7,093 in current emergency.
Mr. Florina?
At this time, also, we have motion to waive the three read rule.
Motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on the motion to waive the three read rule, please.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And we waive the three read rule. Roll call on the ordinance.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And that ordinance has been passed. Item number five.
An ordinance appropriating $30,000 from the barrel fund to contract with an outside company for building inspections, climate inspections, and other necessary services in current emergency.
Mrs. Gray?
Thank you, President Arnold.
Thank you, President Arnold. At this time, I'm agreeing the motion to waive the three week rule.
Uh, we have a motion to waive the three week rule, seconded by Mr. Florina. Roll call on the motion to waive the three week rule.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Hackett?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And we waive the three week rule.
Roll call on the ordinance.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Hackett?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And we'll call on the ordinance. Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Hackett?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed.
Item number seven, please.
For free, an ordinance appropriating, appropriating a tentative agreement between the city and Philadelphian International Association of Carfighters, local number three hundred, for served case under two thousand sixteen M A D, number two, number one, five, authorizing appropriate city officials to execute the agreement for emergency.
Yes, Mrs. Gray?
Due to kind constraints, once again, I request to waive the three week rule.
Request for waive the three week rule, seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on waiving the three week rule.
Carte?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Hackett?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed.
I, I have been informed that we need a motion to take eight and nine off the agenda this evening. Mrs. Neal?
I'd like to make a motion to remove items eight and nine from the agenda.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on the motion to remove eight and nine off the agenda, please. Carte?
Do we, do we need to remove number nine? Sorry for the confusion.
I don't think there's any harm in reading number nine and not having it. But I don't think it's, if it's removed from the agenda tonight, it's...
It's just not being read.